Hello, it is 6:01 PM on April 18th. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, and Director Johnson. We have Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, executive staff and members of our staff, as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the board meeting using the Zoom link on the board desk website. Can we pause these rights for the budgetary reasons?
Okay, moving on to agenda item 2.04, review of the agenda. And we have a few updates. We have 5.02, non-exchange presentation was updated. 5.03, added a PowerPoint to budget discussion. And 6.04, help curriculum for its first reading has been moved to the business items portion and ignore the consent agenda. And 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I'm going to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in the second to approve the agenda as modified. Discussion. All in favor? Say aye.
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 I was distracted, sorry.
Okay, agenda items have passed. Oh, aye. Aye to zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item 3.01, student directors. Who would like to go first?
This week, I enjoyed working with members of the cabinet and the community in our local budget committee. It was, this wasn't my official school board work, but it was great and it was phenomenal to build a commonality in the committee. And it's great to have, as said, and have these personal interactions to make it work more meaningful and insightful. Other things going on in the school district. The middle school sports just started up, which is exciting for them. I went down to Park Place to help the track athletes last Monday. And so it was cool to see all these guys who are hopefully going to be in here for a while and doing their groove physically, which helps them mentally and all their other schoolwork. And with all that schoolwork, it's AP exam season. So we've got, so the high school, we've got a lot of students ramping up all their studies for that, myself included. And then, other than that, getting pretty close to the end of the school year, probably going to start seeing a lot of countdown soon. Days till the end, but it'll be okay and we can make it. That's all I've got.
I'm from Scott Valley. There's been a few interesting things happen. I talked to one student already who's, I had signed up for the Student Advisory Council. Don't know if he's been picked yet, but it seems like it's some, some anticipation there. And hopefully a whole bunch of students all over are going out for that. And what's going on? Recently, on Friday, a class, or not a class, after lunchtime, a club, they call it a breakout, started, basically it's like a club event. It's, because, because Scott Valley is a very unique school, it doesn't really have a general assembly, they don't even do P A announcements in the beginning. It's kind of hard to meet, meet new people and interact with other students outside of their own classroom. So they started that club. It hasn't had that many people in it so far, but it just, my family joined, which made it grow a lot better. And, and we got some more people this past time, so it's about, up to about like eight or 10. But, so that's very exciting and, what else? And also I was able to meet with the Scott Valley ASB. And they, they kind of highlighted the fact that Scott Valley doesn't have a, a wheelchair for those who, available on campus for on-campus transportation for disabled students. And so that was just something they're thinking about, that they could possibly try to give some sort of, some funds available perhaps, buy one, just to have on campus. And also highlighted some, some problems with, there is a handicapped or disabled person in the ASB. And, and that person kind of, just talk a little bit how it's difficult for that person to get around. And because Scott Valley's facilities are a little, are pretty old and it's not up to date for handicaps. Yeah, but like I think you said, it's getting close to the end of the school year and still a lot of school to go, but hopefully we can do a lot in the time we have with the Student Advisory Council and our positions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Andrew and Nathan. Directors, any questions?
Nathan, first two weeks and they are insane for AP. What are you taking for AP?
I've got AP Calculus, AP United States History, and AP Language and Composition this year.
Okay, use your practice exams to how basic it should be. Use your practice exams and bring granola bars or whatever with you eat when you're there for a long time. Or use different snacks for our kids, because like, and just tell your friends, eat breakfast. You need your brain working. I can set it for you. Yeah, and Andrew, I love that you guys have a, especially someone with, on the ASB, that's huge because that brings a really important perspective. So I appreciate you bringing that up and that's something we can probably figure out. So we have more, do you think, is that something that, the, are those issues that we can address? Yeah, awesome. Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that, that's really, that's a huge thing. Awesome, guys, thank you.
Nathan, what did you think about being on the project committee?
All right. It was awesome. I got to meet people, I met director of office finally. And I also, I learned a ton about the budget. It made sense. There was some internal conflict at first, but we learned to work well with other people. And it was really good. I think, I think we've reached some good conclusions and we know where to go from now.
It's very responsible. It was, I would think it'd be kind of overwhelming, important, huge decisions which affects students and different type of activities. So I'd like to report that, to get that input from you. So thank you.
Andrew and Nathan, thank you so much for your reports. We appreciate you. Nathan, it was really great to work with you. We were just neighbors, partners, and we had five ones, so that was good. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item 3.02. We have a special guest in the room, Mayor Thomas will give an update on Imagine Monroe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, members of the board, and also to our residents in our district. I, so over the last couple of years, we've been doing a lot, just like you have. We've been responding to COVID-19, we've been responding to impacts to the economy, we've been responding to a variety of changes around ensuring that Monroe continues to be a safe place. And one of the major things that we did last year, as nerdy as this is, is we developed what's called an aspirational vision statement. One of the pieces of feedback we got about three or four years ago from our Economic Development Advisory Board was, when you looked at our planning commission, planning commission's comprehensive plan, when you took a look at the documents that we have at the city of Monroe, there wasn't a clearly defined vision that was shared by the community. And I know that the school district had done something similar to developing sort of an aspirational vision statement at one point in time. Our Economic Development Advisory Board said, hey, we should do that too. The city council back in 2018 said, hey, that's a great idea, let's do that too. And so in 2019, the council adopted a budget for us to be able to develop an aspirational vision statement. That was to begin in 2020. Things kind of happened in 2020 that led to some delays in that. And last year, the very end of the year, the council did adopt an aspirational vision statement. The aspirational vision statement is a statement that is a result of 1,300 written responses from members of our community, so residents, employers, and visitors. It is a result of a steering committee of 21 people from diverse backgrounds and lived experiences. It is the result of dedicated staff and dedicated consultants and a caring and supportive council. The aspirational vision statement, which was adopted in December of 2021 by our city council, is known as Imagine Monroe. And Imagine Monroe describes who we want to be today and who we aspire to be in the future. Imagine Monroe will inform all of our efforts beginning this year, from projects to programs to policies to budgeting to service delivery, to other interactions within and outside of Monroe. Imagine Monroe reads, Imagine Monroe, a lively center surrounded by nature, a place of beauty and goodwill. Our parks, waterways, and environment are healthy and accessible for everyone to enjoy. Our historic downtown and business districts are thriving and full of locally owned businesses and locally sourced products. We can find everything we need with regional connections and with a variety of choices for work, housing, dining, shopping, arts, and activities. Friendly and responsive, we strengthen connections through gathering spaces, events, services, and community-centered infrastructure, creating a safe place for all. In Monroe, everyone feels at home and everyone feels safe at home. Imagine Monroe will be the starting point to develop policies and budgets to deliver services and to guide our interactions with one another in our community. Imagine Monroe will be the ending point to assess our success and our failures and revise how we do business so that we can continue to improve. So Imagine Monroe is our guide looking to 2022 and beyond. We have a number of work products that we're looking at. One of those is that city staff and I continue to improve our understanding in the area of truth, reconciliation, and reform with people and communities that are underrepresented and that have different and diverse lived experiences. Our improved understanding and improved outreach will inform policy and budget development, service delivery, and again, other interactions with city staff, council, me, and also our residents, employers, business owners, and visitors. So part of what we're doing here is we're making certain that as we're communicating with the school district, is we're working with the Monroe Chamber of Commerce, is we're working with the different nonprofits. As I'm going out and meeting with people in the community is, I'm trying harder to make certain that I'm listening to people. I have a different lived experience than a lot of other people. I went to three high schools. I was raised in Virginia. I graduated from college in California. This is part of my lived experience, but there are other lived experiences also. It's important for me to make certain that I'm hearing from people, to make certain that the policies that we have do exactly what it is that we're supposed to, to make certain we're ensuring liberty and justice for all, to make certain that we are both equal in the application of what we do and equitable, understanding that not everybody has the same lived experience, and understanding we want to make certain that we are delivering great quality services to everybody. So as we're working with the Chamber of Commerce, we're making certain that we are listening to the different businesses in our community that are owned by different people, and trying to make certain that we are, when we're putting together grants, when we're trying to figure out where to put sidewalks, when we're trying to figure out where to build a park, that we are considering the different populations that are here in town to make certain that a certain area of town doesn't get all the improvements in other areas, huh? So listening to our business community to understand what the needs are there, to listen to our residents to understand what the needs are, and so on and so forth. And I'm looking forward to working with the school district to help make that a reality as well, to make certain we in Monroe are speaking with one voice. And to the extent that the school board is able to get behind the work that we are trying to do within the city, we want to ensure, as I'm sure the school board would like to, that we are creating a safe place where everyone feels at home and everyone feels safe at home. I'm here, if you have any questions, if you're willing to answer them, the board president would like me to. And I know that you're coming out tomorrow to say a few words, and we'll look forward to hearing from you, and also the Acting Superintendent. Thank you, everybody.
I got a question. Yes. Yes, very well articulated. I almost feel like I'd give an applause after a speech like that. One of the things that, as a business owner, one of the things that I like to geek out about is demographics and the growth in Monroe population, because that affects the school district, housing availability, because we have a lot of apartments coming in, we're fitting them in in spaces. And really, you know, there's the downtown city limits, but then there's the, the area that we service, basically the fire department. So what is your, I guess, general idea of population and housing availability?
We need to do more with housing availability. The cost I live in, that I purchased in 2001 with my partner, was then about $200,000. And I'm understanding, according to Cillin, that today it's somewhere over $685 or so. We just had a house sell up in our higher part of our neighborhood for right around a million dollars. We need more housing affordability. What I'm looking forward to is not just housing that is grant funded, where it is focused on people making a certain income, because we have that coming in, we still need to invest in that. What I'm looking forward to is finding ways to help encourage developers and builders to build what we call missing metal housing. So that's housing that is affordable to more people, so more choices of housing, and that's what's reflected in Imagine Monroe. So that's one of the things that we need. We do need more apartments, we need more condominiums. And I don't know that there are a lot of people that understand that some of the problems we have here in Monroe, or in a county, or in a city, or any other city, are, are issues that come from the state. So we don't get condominiums here, because when you build a condominium, you've got something like a 10-year warranty for the condominium. But if you build an apartment, that warranty doesn't exist the same way, and your ability to suit as a developer is not the same. So you build an apartment first, in which case people are renting as opposed to buying a house, you know, a condo that they can afford today, and then generating that equity into the future like we have with our house, which then leads to generational equity for being able to house something that can be sold to your kids perhaps in the future. So there are lots at the state level that need to change. And I'm thankful to see the apartments coming to town, thankful to see the attached housing product that's coming to town, because we need that here. We need to make certain people can live here in our community of all different lived experiences, all different income ranges, and so on. So at least for the city of Monroe, that's what I see. And then for the city of Monroe, we want to annex our urban growth area. So we just put in an annexation to the north of the fairgrounds, not, not the entirety of Robin Hood by any stretch, but an area that just recently developed. And it's important for us to do that, because cities are supposed to incorporate territory, there's supposed to be higher density. We have areas of our county, just like in King County, where you have essentially cities and you have one county council member, you have the sheriff, you have an executive, you have, you have, you have. What you don't have is you don't have a council, kind of like you have with school board members, you don't have a mayor. And so that's one of the things that I'd like to see is the ability to have higher density in our urban growth areas, annexes areas as well. And then as far as housing throughout the rest of the district, you are substantially larger, I don't, right? It's one of the interesting things, I have conversations with people, they ask me what's going on at the school district, like, I'm in charge of the school district, which is absolutely not the case. I try to explain to them that we're only about three to four square miles, maybe as much as six square miles, and you're about 95 square miles. You're, you represent as a totality about 45,000 or so people, and I work for about 20, that's, that's one thing that I have to educate people about a lot. I'm hoping for a member of Whitfield that I answered your question, if not, I've entertained a follow-up, if that's the board president.
I'd just like to say that I'm proud to be a part of the Monroe community and have a business here. The way it works with other businesses and our roadways and the facilities, you know, is very good. Also with the Rotary, you know, we have members of the Monroe administrative staff, and the police, and the fire department, and you have a great delivery system. However, I think your budget is just a little bit above ours. I think you're about a million, we're just about 97 million. So we're, we're kind of, or what is your budget?
Nearly 100 million. That's, that's all funds, that includes enterprise, that includes utilities, that includes general funds, so about 100 million total, approximately 14 million in general funds. So it just depends upon what aspect of the budget, you might have the same thing in, you know, for the Monroe School District.
I'm sure you have a board that's just well behaved and never disagrees with you, and is always on your side, just like we have on this board. That's just a fun comment.
I have a city council that does a really good job of a balance of checks and balances in our government. One of the things that I do is I engage our council a lot to make certain of policies that are related to the budgets that I bring forward reflect their values. So I'm happy to say that the two of us working together do the checks and balances that are part of our district. Thank you.
If you have any questions, you can tell us. I have a question, not specifically about what you said tonight, but we have this thing called Celebrate the World, and we're recording people from the community reading books. I'm wondering if you would like to be a part of that and read a book and be recorded that we can then share with teachers in classrooms, spread out to the rest of the community.
If that's something the board would like, the Acting Superintendent, I'd be happy to be there. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom? Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Thomas, for all of that information, for sharing it, for coming in. And I appreciate you as well. I'm also a visitor in town, my family's been here for over 20 years, and we graduated, counted it last time, I think 26, I was the first, and so we still have family in the high school. And I just, Monroe is a beautiful place to grow up in, and I'm so, so glad that you're helping lead that. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Board President. Thank you, Board.
Okay, we are going on to agenda item 3.02. And I'll just read my little notes here. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the writing minutes. Please understand that while may appear the board is in a quid pro quo in various matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or board workshops, but are also open public meetings. Each director has had had ample time to study issues, asked appropriate questions, and obtained satisfactory answers from the superintendent, her staffer, throughout scientific research. We will welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how, oh my goodness, sorry, I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during this school board meeting is not a forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during the speaker's comments, there were to begin to approach a personal concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep the comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, again, please contact any staff members, help with how to before they complain about personnel. Okay, so we have one on Zoom, we'll start there.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hi, please have you introduce yourself and your relationship to the school district.
Thanks for the reminder. Robin Hayashi, sixth grade teacher at Park Place Middle School, and also the president for Monroe Education Association, known in short as MEA. And I thank you for your time tonight. Good evening to everybody. I would like to start out my comments tonight emphasizing the need for our MEA members, other labor groups, and our parents and community to understand the severity of what not passing a levy looks like. This levy failure has massive impacts, not only in the lives of our students, but in the lives of the community members who work for the Monroe School District. School districts depend on this levy money to backfill the money that the state does not provide for public education. However, even with state funding, each school district is still dependent on levy money to keep the district running at a functional level. We have heard in past public comments how much the community relies on amenities and/or services that MSD provides. Without levy dollars, the amenities the district can provide becomes limited. I hope everyone will work together to pass this levy in November of 2022. Our kids depend on it. Moving on now to the second half of my public comment. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to share our thoughts regarding the Budget and Levy Committee. At the outset, this seemed like a promising opportunity to be part of the decision-making for our upcoming school year budget. And members and I were appreciative to be included in the process. However, due to district-determined time restraint constraints, excuse me, lack of information and clarity, the committee work was not what we had hoped. I want to make it clear that the committee did not itself come to a consensus on a specific budget proposal, and in my opinion, it appeared that decisions had been predetermined outside of committee work. Many committee members' questions and requests for clarification remain unanswered, and MEA is currently in the process of requesting more information to better understand the reasoning for the recommendations that will be proposed to the school board tonight. In committee meetings, we heard a lot about right sizing our staffing. MEA's position is, and always will be, that cuts to certificated staff should be an absolute last resort. MEA believes that right sizing means having student-to-staff ratios at levels that allow us to meaningfully support our students in their growth. Right sizing means that we have paraeducators and other support staff in our buildings who are partners and can help give our students the support to which they are entitled. It became clear in these committee meetings that the district's definition of right sizing does not align with MEA. Because of a failed levy, because of a failed levy, you will likely discuss tonight a resolution for a reduction in force, or RIF. I completely disagree with riffing as an acceptable way to approach balancing this budget. If staff are riffed, we risk the chance of these teachers and support staff never again returning to Monroe. We currently have staff that plan on leaving the district due to the lack of staffing and unattainable workload they've experienced over the past year, not to mention the laundry list of open positions on the district website, including paraeducator positions, certificated specialist positions, classroom teacher positions, psychologist positions, and speech-language pathologist positions, to name a few. All of these positions are critical to serving our students, especially those who receive special services. Why would we, why would we propose riffing current staff? when we already know we will have staff attrition and given the unfilled positions that are currently posted? If we are prioritizing what's best for students, this talk of right sizing and riffing is contradictory to all that is good for our students. This year, we are barely getting by with our current staffing shortages. MEA has many members taking on supercontracts to ensure students are receiving services they're entitled to by law because the district is unable to hire staff to fill these positions. Elementary specialists have had to go without teaching their own classes and cover for unfilled substitute positions so many times that they were unable to issue report card grades to their students for semester. This impact has had a domino effect felt by elementary classroom staff because then prep periods are canceled when a specialist's time is canceled. Secondary staff are missing numerous preps on a regular basis in order to also provide classroom coverage. We are already in a staffing crisis. Proposing additional cuts is programmatically irresponsible and a huge disservice to your current employees who are working their hardest every day to keep our buildings functioning. Do you realize that there are staff who have been rifted three out of the last four years? I can imagine that if we issue riffs again this year, it becomes very enticing for those affected staff to leave us for a neighboring district that is hiring and one that values its employees and doesn't call riffs when they're unnecessary. We call on you tonight to balance your budget elsewhere, but not with staffing cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Hey, Melanie. Hi, now, can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Of course. My name is Melanie Walcartt. I'm a mother of one current, one incoming and a third future student of Monroe Schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I was also a volunteer on the Budget Advisory Committee over the past several weeks. I want to thank Brenda Hunt, Ken Whitworth, the district office and any other staff that collaborated to work on the upcoming budget. It's never easy to make these kinds of reductions. And I know a lot of work went into this process to limit the impact to kids as much as possible. I also come to as the new chair for the Citizens for Monroe Schools Committee with hopes that we will see different results for the next levy attempt. Something I worry won't happen if the board and district don't truly listen to community members. As those who are on the Budget Committee know, I have been a bit of a broken record on this. Later during this meeting, you will hear about results from the Thought Exchange Survey in which a common theme is that community members want impacts to be felt from the top down. You've heard this for many months now surrounding different areas involving Monroe School District. Additionally, the Budget Advisory Committee ranked cuts to district office departments at the very top of the desired priority list. The board now knows I could go on much longer than three minutes about this, but I'm asking the board to consider some amendments to the proposals that will be presented to you later this evening. The proposals include three percent cuts to the following departments. The Superintendent's Office for about fourteen thousand four hundred. HR for about twenty-six thousand five hundred. Fiscal for about thirty-six thousand. Communications for about sixteen thousand six hundred. The board budget for about six thousand eight hundred. And the operations budget for about one hundred and fifty-eight point three thousand, a total of roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, during presentations for February's levy, it was stated that levy money accounts for fifteen percent of the overall district budget. Given that the board is being asked to consider using seven million in fund balance to cover a portion of the deficit, roughly half of the proposed levy amount, I would like the board to see the district. I would like to see the number of the district office cuts to seven percent, just under half of that fifteen percent number the community heard over and over again. I have more specific math numbers here, but for the sake of time, that's an estimated six hundred and six, six hundred and six thousand dollars as opposed to the proposed two hundred and sixty thousand, a difference of three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This would allow you to one hundred thousand back to professional development, give fifty thousand back to experiential learning, give the fifteen thousand back to the school building budgets and move forward still adopting the science curriculum to replace what's outdated for a hundred and fifty thousand. That's three hundred and fifteen thousand. And you can give the other thirty-one thousand back to paraeducator hours for certificated staffing. Please listen to what this community is telling you. Minimize the impact to kids and start at the top. Furthermore, I know of a right sizing, I despise the term anyway, of certificated staff was planned no matter what, and I don't agree with the cuts, by the way. That said, I believe the two point seven million in reductions equates to eleven or twelve full-time teaching staff. And looking at the HR reports from all the meetings in twenty twenty-two, including tonight, so far, there's one NHS teacher retiring and one NHS teacher resigning, two teachers resigning at the middle schools and three teachers resigning from elementary schools, all effective this summer. I know it's not exactly black and white due to teaching endorsements and all that, but I expect that those seven positions will factor into whatever shuffling is necessary with any action taken this month by the school board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Hello, Heather. Can I have you please introduce yourself and your relationship with the school district?
Absolutely. So my name is Heather Young. I'm a very proud parent of two kids on IEPs in the district. And I was very happy to be selected as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee recently. So I wanted to start by talking to you a little bit about that experience. So first of all, thank you very, very much for creating that committee. I thought that a lot of things went very, very well. I sent you what is a fairly long email. So I'm not going to cover all of that tonight. You can read that at your leisure. It covers some of the things that went really well and then a few ideas that I think might be able to be improved if and when you do this again in the future. So like some of the other people have stated, I have concerns about the, the proposed cuts. And I completely understand the math behind going back to what the pre-COVID ratios are for certificated staff and paraeducators. My concern isn't so much with the cuts per se, but what I'm hearing from teachers and from others within the schools is that because we have such a difficult time right now getting substitutes, that many of the teachers are not getting their prep times. And as we heard in a prior comment, some of the specialist teachers are being pulled in to teach other classes. And so my concern is if you go back to the pre-COVID numbers on teachers, we're basically throwing gasoline on a burning building. The, the problem that we face in terms of not being able to get substitutes is a separate problem. But if we go back to those pre-COVID numbers with the certificated staff and pairs before or without fixing the systemic issues that we face around the substitutes, it's just going to exacerbate that problem and it's going to make it very, very difficult for us to keep the really good staff that we have, that we want to keep. So, you know, it, it really is something that it's kind of below the surface, but I hope that you'll take the time to look at it. The other thing that I think I probably have a different position on than a lot of members of the community is that I was really disappointed not to see anything related to extracurricular on the list to be kept. And I, I appreciate how important extracurricular is, but it is extra. It is on top of what the core focus is for the school. And what I think is also super important to understand, and I'll talk to you probably at a future district meeting about this, is it's also not inclusive. I looked through all of the different after-school extracurricular clubs and activities and there is nothing out there that allows participation for all students. There are a number of students who are blocked from participating in these activities. And so if you are choosing to make reductions in areas that affect all students but keep the activities that are extra and only for some students, I, I don't think that's in keeping with what, what your stated goals are for the activity. So I know that's not a popular idea, but I hope it's something that affects her. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, moving on to Agenda I M five point zero one, Transportation Department Report. We have Mike Birch, our Transportation Director, who will present a report about the Transportation Department. Yeah, I think we have a couple more public comments. Jenny, are we able to come back where you want to figure that out?
You want to, sir?
Yeah, let's have him do that. Is that okay? I believe we can still, we can go, yeah, four point zero one. You're already here, Mike. You're fancy.
All right, well, thank you for allowing me to come share my departmental tonight. Agenda that I'm going to cover is I'm going to first cover our staffing. I'm going to look at our fleet inventory, depreciation schedule, our bus purchase plan for the next five years. Then we'll look at student counts from this year, the routes that we have and the achievements from this year. And then we're going to cover both short-term and long-term initiatives. So first, I'm going to look at staffing. And I'm going to look at going all the way back to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, kind of give us a perspective of what we've, what has transpired in this transportation. So eighteen nineteen is really the last real kind of normal year that we had. And we had seventy-one total staff in transportation, of which sixty-one drivers, two supervisors, one office support, one full-time driver trainer and one driver trainer slash driver and two dispatching, three mechanics. And then nineteen twenty, we were down to sixty-five total staff. Twenty twenty-one, sixty-two. And then at the start of this year, we were at fifty-seven. And then since the start, we're now down to fifty-one. So each one of those years, there was a lot more drastic drop in some of those years with drivers, but we were gaining back, if we were one or two here or there throughout those years. But you can see that steady decline in transportation. Our school bus inventory, right now, we've got eight of the type A buses. Those are the small buses, the gas buses. And then we have fourteen of those have wheelchair lifts. We have one type C, which is a sixty-passenger bus, which is the engine in the front and a little bit smaller than the big ones. We have sixteen of the type Cs, which is the engine in the front. We have one of the type Ds, which is the rear engine with a wheelchair. And then twenty-seven of the remainder of those are transit buses, which what we call those. So a total of sixty-seven. The depreciation that we're looking at, so at nineteen twenty, this, these are the depreciation payments that we get on those buses. So right, nineteen twenty, you can see we had eight As on still depreciation, eighteen Cs, twenty Ds and then forty-six total. Last year, that's that you're seeing the eight, eighteen, nineteen, forty-five for three thirty-one, thirty, three thirty-two. And then the payments forecasted out for this year, a four fifty-one, seven twenty-seven. And you can see that with our purchase, what we want to do is we want, as they fall off depreciation, we're adding new buses on, so we don't have this big drop. Back in two thousand thirteen, they purchased, I think it was six or seven of the type C buses. So when those hit, we're going to see kind of a ball. So what we've been doing the last, since I've been here for five years, we've been trying to purchase an equal number, not a huge amount. So we've been going with more, you know, two of the bigger ones and maybe a couple of the small ones. And we're transitioning more to the, the type, the type D buses, which is the transit types. Gives us more capacity. The engine in the back, the driver, it gives them a lot more opportunity here, the students a lot better. It's not as noisy in there, a little more reliable buses. So over the, you know, up till twenty-five, twenty-six, you'll see that the type As will increase those, you know, on the depreciation, the type Cs will start to drastically drop off and we'll have more of the type Ds on there. The bus purchase plan, so this is kind of what I kind of alluded to. Over the next four years, five years, we're going to go to kind of two, two, two type As, two type Bs and we'll be surplusing the same amount that we're purchasing at that time to keep our inventory. We don't have as many routes right now, so we have a lot more spare buses in the lot, but hopefully that will change in the near term. So I don't really want to decrease that, that our inventory very quickly right now. So that's kind of our five-year bus purchase plan. And let's look at the student counts. So we go back to nineteen twenty, and this is the beginning of the year before the shutdown. For the basic ed, we're fifty-one, twenty-one. And this is typical of any year leading up to COVID. Twenty twenty-one, we were down to twenty-three eighty-four for basic ed, so pretty drastic fall off. And then this year, we're at thirty-eight seventy-four, so we bounced back a little. So the same three years for the special education was two eighty-one and then one eighty-six COVID year and we're back up to two forty-nine. So that really goes, I'll kind of talk about that with our props when I get to that, so, which is right here. So looking at those same three years, we had thirty-seven basic ed routes. Last year, we dropped down to twenty-six. And this year, we're back to thirty. So we're still seven shy from when we were at full, full capacity, which is fortunate because we don't have so many drivers. So really, it's good in that respect. But as I said, we're hopeful that we'll build back up with more ridership next year. And then looking back at nineteen twenty, we had twenty-seven special ed routes. Last year, nineteen. And then this year, twenty-five, of which of those twenty-five, we have two that we're currently contracting out just because of lack of resources. We have three shuttles and that maintained the same for all three years, and that's the Snow Isle buses and then ROTC. And then McKinney-Vento, in nineteen twenty, we had fifteen. Last year, eight. And this year, we have sixteen and two out of the sixteen we're contracting out. Just, we just don't have the drivers. Most, those typically run, those conflict right with our regular basic ed routes. Those typically run, those conflict right with our regular basic ed routes in the morning and afternoon. So you can't, a driver that maybe is only getting four or five hours on a basic ed route or six, they can't supplement because it just conflicts with the times. So we need extra drivers to run those routes. So our achievements for this year, strangely enough, COVID and the driver shortage was a big achievement for us. In the sense that, I'm sure you'd heard in the news, you know, surrounding districts, they're having just a lot of canceled routes for days or even weeks at a time because of, you know, drivers would have to quarantine. We, at the worst-case scenario, we had eight drivers quarantined for a period of a week. And we only had to cancel one route on two occasions. We, it was, you know, all hands on deck. We had staff members driving, I was driving. We were extremely creative in the office as far as breaking up routes to pull a driver here and put a driver there. So I'm really proud of how we responded to that and just really maintained the transportation services through very, very difficult times. Another achievement was the Optin model. We went to this last year out of necessity. Just, we absolutely had to know how many students run a bus in order to manage the COVID, the contact tracing and the volumes and the reduction in staff. So we needed the same thing this year. It really allowed us to optimize the routes, work to where we could combine routes. We did that on probably about five or six occasions where we combined routes to optimize those drivers without, you know, extending the length of the other route, which was a real win for us. So the Optin model is something we're going to continue to do. It's a little front-end heavy as far as resources and time commitment for us, because you're doing a lot of routing at the very beginning of the year, but then it falls off and it's very manageable after that. Driver recruitment, that was a success for us this year. We were able to get paid training and offer that as an incentive. And all the surrounding districts are doing that right now in some form. They're offering some kind of incentive, some are signing bonuses, or when they get their CDL, they're giving them a bonus. Right now, we're doing up to 80 hours of paid training, which is that threshold for them to get a CDL. And that is really, that has brought in a few extra drivers that we normally wouldn't have had. So that's a big success for us this year. And then the new portable, we're enjoying that immensely. It's a really nice space for our drivers. The bathrooms that are attached, the running water. It's a great space that has, you know, staff meetings. It's very, very comfortable. I think, direct to within, you both can see it, it's a very nice facility. So our initiatives for next year is we're going to maintain the emphasis on recruiting. Just, I think each year, we have just normal attrition. We'll have some drivers that are retiring. We, this year, some of the drivers that left. I don't really think we have a retention issue. I mean, just life happens. One moved to St. Thomas, that made sense for their family. Or lived out in Gold Bar, it made sense for them to live out there. So I think we'll find experience somewhere in that. So I think we need to really stay hard on the recruiting part and put that as an emphasis for us next year. Title Drive, well, some of you don't even know what Title Drive is. That's a title drive. It's a tablet. And it mounts in the school bus. And about five years ago, the state approved turn-by-turn GPS navigation in the school bus. Up to them, they didn't allow it. Now they allow it. And we started going down this road. We purchased about 10 of them, purchased some of the new buses as we got them. And the scenario for this is, is that a driver will log into their bus, it's still being mounted in the bus, they'll log into it. They'll clock in, it can be used for timekeeping. They'll take this and they'll walk around the bus. They'll do their safety inspection, which we now do with another piece of hardware. So this will consolidate all onto this. Then they'll get in the bus, pull up their route, which ties directly into our routing planning software. And it's real-time updates. So if we make a change in the office, it'll get to here immediately. And it gives them turn-by-turn GPS navigation. So you hit start, just like you're doing with the Garmin or your, you know, your navigation. It starts to direct you, it's audible, plus it gives you visual. You get to a stop, and then it pulls up a list of the students that are supposed to be on the bus with their pictures. And then this goes in conjunction with a proximity RFID card reader that each student will have. And as they get on, they swipe it in front of the card reader and loads them. And it can even send text to their parents telling them they just got on or they might have. As they get off, they swipe it and it unloads them. And this would be huge for our office because 90% of our calls are, "Where's the bus?", or "Is so-and-so on the bus?" And this will tell them, and will tell us in the office, we don't have to radio to the driver. Say, "Stop your bus, we're missing a kid or, you know", and they went to the bus instead of car, which happens. We'll know exactly who's on that bus without having to do that. And you can, you know, give that comfort back to the parents, to that child. So we started to get this ready for a pilot, right before COVID. We're going to pilot it at Salem Woods. You know, go real small and you'll just see how everybody responded to it. When the drivers started working up the budgets, we came since then, I think they've had probably six or seven software updates on this, which is good because they've improved a lot of the bugs that they had, which is relatively new. So we want to put the emphasis back into piloting this again. And we're going to work with Salem Woods' first plan. We're going to evaluate if that still makes sense to do that. But this is a real, I want to really push this next year. And the benefits, obviously, you can tell, it's just, it's huge for us. And it'll be huge for some of the district leaders that have said they might want to get a CDL. They can jump in the bus and they'll get turn-by-turn navigation. That's where our sub, this is a great tool for the sub. When they add them on a route, they can just jump in, this will guide them through it. So that's a big push for next year. And then Traverse, that is a cloud solution to our routing and planning software. Right now, we're on server-based. And we need Traverse to talk to this, but Traverse would cut that middleman out. And it's what Tyler Drive, Tyler Technologies is the company. They're putting all their emphasis on Traverse. So you're seeing bug fixes faster, features are coming in faster. We'll have updates a lot faster. So we're looking at migrating our server-based routing planning to this Traverse next year. So we'll take a look at that. And then Department of Ecology, electric school bus grant. I feel I completed the grant probably two months ago. And this is a scrap replacement grant for electric school buses. So they're looking at probably towards the end of this month to notify the recipients. So we'll find out that if we've been selected for this grant. So that would be, you know, there's a big push on that. I'm sure you've heard of that, the government's putting a lot of money into the electric school bus arena. So that's going to be our first step in that direction. And then the bus lot resurfacing, that's huge for us right now. We've got some sinkholes that would swallow you alive right now, that lot. And some of it's deteriorating, so we're looking forward to getting that resurfaced. Some of our long-term initiatives are upgrading our current fueling system, which is really, really old. Software for that is motive-based software, which I don't, I don't think I've ever seen that before. So it doesn't talk well to our preventative maintenance software. So it's really difficult for us to get a full cost picture of the bus. We're missing that fuel picture. So upgrading that would help. The pumps that we have are old. We've struggled to find parts for those if it breaks down, so we're going to look at upgrading that. And then surveillance cameras on the lot. Last year, we had two pedal reactors cut off of something smaller about two. They tried fuel, stealing fuel from us, but that ended real quick because they were on diesel. A bus, and they wanted gas, and that was a big surprise. And I'm looking at a bus loss, just that way, it's a little more, you know, makes a little bit of sense for the environment. That's all I had to, do you have any questions?
I have one for me. On the staff that doesn't show anybody for bus training, what are you doing to train bus drivers?
We have, we had, prior to COVID, we had one full-time trainer. That, I think it was a seven-hour a day trainer. And we also had part-time driver trainer slash driver. So that's what we have now. Because we realized, I would, driver training, it goes up and down. It's a sister family. You'll have six people you're currently training, and then it'll fall off for a couple of months. So that flexibility of having a driver slash driver trainer, who has all the credentials to train drivers, given that flexibility, really, you know, stop driving so much and put all that attention on the driver trainer, has really worked out really well this year. And I should mention that we have four candidates in right now. Three are working towards their CDL, and two of those three are will be tested next week to get their CDL. And then one gentleman came to us from Texas, and he came fully credentialed. So we're just moving him through kind of the district-specific training right now, and he'll be ready to drive a school bus for us.
And another question. I hadn't really noticed the fact that we have wheelchair-assist buses. And how many students do we, do we have that need that, that need, have that service? I see them on city buses. I didn't realize that we had them or had paid attention to that.
I think it's, I don't have the exact number. It's probably in the neighborhood of 10 students that are in wheelchairs that we're transporting. How many?
Thank you.
I think the report, I appreciate it. The electric bus grant. As we look into doing that, you said it's for a scrap bus. So as we are, what you're saying is what we would do is we would use one of the buses that were scrapped and replace that with the electric bus if we were, right?
Yeah, that's a contingency of that grant is that you have to identify. So right now, I put in for three electric buses, so we have to identify three that we would have to actually scrap.
Do we have anything we have on our schedule that are ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike. You always have such a fun presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to 4.01, audience comment, do one more.
Hi, well, thank you for the talk at the end. I guess we're tired. I'm coming along, yeah. She need to talk a little bit about what are your feelings about what's going on with the school and her kids, and part of the community, the last one community. And let's see what she wants to say.
Okay, I've heard, ah, su nombre y su relación a la distinta.
Ah, mi nombre es Hola Jimenez y tengo dos niños en pre-adolescencia y uno en high school.
Yeah, my name is Hola Jimenez, yeah, three children in school. For now, I'm at middle school in one in high. Okay. You can increase me as a parent.
Okay. Lo quería comentarles es que el día, ahorita de abril, se habló de, de.
The April 12th, they do the presentation of sex education, for sure.
Ah, y yo me metí, tú vales más que nos metimos, pero no pudimos entender porque todo estaba en inglés.
Was a lot of parents who got into Spanish, um, mom, and they couldn't understand anything to their English.
Y quería ver si podría haberlo preguntado en español o que nos dieran en persona más fácil.
I would like to ask if you guys can do another meeting in person for the parents. By speaking, don't care about what extent what is all about.
Y la otra cosa también era de high school para que tengan orientación los niños para cuando se quiera dar una carrera, que alguien tenga que los oriente como a las artesicas o todo lo que se necesita para esa una colegio.
And I want to ask, request to have more help for the children in the high school when they're ready to graduate. More facility for them to get informed what they can do, get ready for their career, what, who they can talk. For now, it's not enough people there, or is that enough information for the children? And that come from me too, because I hear a lot of parents who are coming to me and say that, oh, I know how this is. I kid already graduated this year, and they don't have any idea about scholarship. There's no information at all to that. And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, gracias, gracias.
Hey, moving on, 4.02, Thought Exchange Update. And we have, Aaron's a part of Communication, giving an update on what we learned from Thought Exchange. Help from Cameron? With help from Cameron, you know, some of them.
Good evening. I am Erin McCarder, Director of Communications. And here with me, I have Sarah Cretris, who is our Communications Manager. And we are here to talk to you about the Thought Exchange approvals. We know you all had the opportunity to take a look at this presentation and the data in your docs, but we wanted to take some time to explain the whole Thought Exchange process and walk you through some of the data. So one of the ways that community members can share their voice is through their votes. And in our community voting no not to approve the renewal of the school program and operations levy, that was their way of communicating something. And so it was important that we took the time, gave them the opportunity to directly share with us what exactly the vote was communicating. So gathering feedback takes time and addressing concerns takes time. So we wanted to thank you for listening to the recommendation of district leaders and choosing not to put the renewal of the levy on the April ballot because there wasn't enough time to engage in that process. One thing that's important for you to understand is the Public Disclosure Commission, often referred to as the PDC, has many rules and regulations in place surrounding public school districts and ballot measures. One of those regulations is surrounding surveying. Districts cannot use surveys to garner support or opposition for a ballot measure, which means on this, we could not ask what would make you vote yes. We also didn't want to specifically ask why didn't our levy pass because there are a lot of people that did vote yes. So we really wanted to ask an open-ended question on what we need to learn moving forward. Thought Exchange recommends having the surveys open for a seven-to-ten day window. And our goal was to get as much participation as possible, so we kept it open for 10 days. We communicated that in a variety of methods to get as much participation as we could. We sent multiple emails to all staff and families in both English and Spanish. It was in multiple places on the website, including in the prominent banner of this right on the front page. It was on the district Facebook page and all 10 school Facebook pages multiple times. We also paid to have it boosted so that it would show up in the feed of those who aren't necessarily following the schools or the district Facebook page. It was on district Instagram and Twitter pages. In all school newsletters for the two weeks that the survey was opened, in the staff newsletter for the same duration, and text messages were sent to all families through talking points, which auto-translates the text messages into the language that family speaks. So we wanted to get more than just, you know, speaking, purchasing in that. So let's talk a little bit about what Thought Exchange is. It's not your typical survey. We wanted to use Thought Exchange because it is a platform that allows participants to respond in their own words and not just pick the closest response like you would in a normal survey. It helps paint a picture of participants' true priorities and not just what is top of mind when they do the survey. So how it works is participants can participate anonymously and submit as many thoughts as they want. There is a character limit, so you can't write a novel in here. And then after you submit thoughts, you can go through and read the thoughts of others. And then read. And then rate how well you, how much you agree with the thoughts of others. So a one star rating would be, I don't agree with your thought. A five star means I strongly agree with what you said. And then they can also go through and discover and just read through other people's opinions. So participants don't have to do all three steps. You can share your thoughts and not rate. You can just come in and rate, or you can just come in and read. We didn't want to send certain thoughts, but we did ask that participants be respectful and sharing their thoughts. The Thought Exchange software auto flags things that they, that they see as inappropriate, rude, hurtful, identify students or are left blank, and then they send those thoughts to us to moderate. A lot of them we pushed through. If there were things with inappropriate language or calling out students or staff members, we kept those out. But we let as many through as we could that we felt were valuable for us to hear from our community. Let's talk about the participant breakdown. There were a total of nine hundred and fifty-two participants. Considering we have around between three and four thousand families in our district and many more people in our community. This number may not sound like a very high percentage. But when we anecdotally look at the other surveys we've done, this number is way higher participation than we normally get. Also, if you were to pull the community listening tour or a community conversation with the board, you're not likely going to get nine hundred and fifty-two participating in a conversation. So we feel like this was a very good sample size. Seven hundred and three individuals shared thoughts. And then on average, well, there's a forty-two thousand, just over forty-two thousand star ratings. That means forty-two thousand thoughts were rated. That's not forty-two thousand stars. So that's a lot of thoughts that were read and rated. Thought Exchange set a goal that we should get an exchange ratio of about twenty. We suggested that people star twenty to thirty thoughts in the exchange. We had an average of sixty, which shows we have very high engagement in this thought exchange. We also wanted to get a little bit of quantitative data. We wanted to know who was filling out the survey, what group they fell into, what language they spoke and what school they were most connected to, if they were a parent or staff member. You'll see the majority of people were parents or guardians, followed by staff. The six percent other was interesting because it had you put in what you are or what you identify with if you're not a parent, staff member or community member. And I think in hindsight, we would take the other option out because people put in things like grandparent or I am a parent educator or things that fall into those other three categories. So that kind, that six percent others will misleading. We did have about two percent participate in Spanish. We had about five people participating in Spanish. And then we sent out the talking points text, which goes in multiple languages and that bumped that number up a lot. So we felt like Thought Exchange was a good way to reach our Spanish speaking community. And then one Ukrainian person, which sounds very interesting. This is what school people felt most connected to. It's pretty evenly spread throughout the whole district with the majority of folks coming from middle high school. Okay, let's talk about what thoughts they shared. So these are the top rated thoughts. So these were thoughts that were shared and the most people ranked these thoughts the highest. So you'll see the number one thought that was shared that people most resonated with was stop approving exaggerated pay raises for administration. Next was lack of trust in putting our students first and transparency of funds. Third was the community needs more transparency from the district. Four, community lacks trust in Monroe School District and lack of transparency. And number five was the district has failed in transparency. So let's see a theme of trust and transparency there. This first paragraph, and this is one of the amendments that made to the presentation, there are two different bar graphs. The first one is top thoughts, top themes by thoughts. So this shows in order the themes of thoughts that showed up the most. So money management was the first theme that people had the most things to say about initially. So this was when they first shared their initial thoughts. These were the things that most came to mind the most. Then you'll see, as people started engaging in the process and starting thoughts, the conversation shifted. So it was initially mostly about money management. And then people started talking about administration and the district office and Sky Valley Education Center, and people started reading those things higher. So what they initially were saying shifted as more thoughts were shared. That makes sense. Okay, and then here is a little bit of a breakdown by theme, just some of the specific thoughts that were shared for each theme. So I won't read through these because you had these before the meeting. Those who haven't seen it, it is in board docs that this full presentation is in there. There's also a link to the full presentation where you can see all of the thoughts that were shared and how they're broken up by theme. So again, number one, number one theme was administration. Number two was the new district administration building. Three was Sky Valley Education Center, and mostly that was on the environmental concerns and the facility there. Number four was transparency. Five was money management. Six was trust. And seven was community, and that was surrounding people wanting more input in decisions that are made and more community involvement in decisions and in schools. This is one that Tamara and I found very interesting that we just added in this weekend. And this kind of shows the polarity of thoughts. So there were a certain group of people that on side A, they rated these thoughts very high, things that had to do with teaching critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion. They rated those things high. You'll see the blue stars below some of those thoughts. And on the polar opposite end, there was people who rated those things very low, meaning they disagreed with those things. The people that disagreed with the things inside A are over on side B. They rated these group of things very high, while the people from side A rated them very low. So but there are very, very differing beliefs and opinions on some things. But where they found common ground, I think, is where we need to focus our efforts. They found common ground in agreeing that they don't like pay raises for administrators, lack of trust, lack of transparency. And I can show the whole column to fit here with you on the things that they agreed on. So there was a lot of different views, as you can imagine, in the survey. But there were things that people found common ground and agreed on for areas of concern. Okay, to view all the thoughts, if we read every single one that was shared, you can visit this link. There's also a link in board docs. It is an interactive report, so there are bar graphs and charts in there. And when you click on the bars and different things in the charts, it will show you all the thoughts that were shared that align with that particular theme. Next steps, it is suggested that the board and district leadership continue to seek feedback from the community. Maybe more community conversation and hearing what people have to say specifically. And carefully, carefully considering what we learned, planning our actions moving forward as a system. And Tamara and I are also developing a frequently asked questions that revolves around a lot of the things and questions we heard in Thought Exchange addressing those, those common themes and questions. Questions. Karen's question. So in the breakdown on slide five, was there really nobody from Sky Valley that entered or took the survey? Hold on, I stopped sharing. I can't see it. I think one of them. Another one. So she, what she's. It was a screenshot, I think, is what the, to grab the image, but there were a hundred and fifty-four people. So seventeen percent of Sky Valley Education Center. We can, I'm going to, this is actually to make sure that's on. And then there were ninety-two people that answered not. They were not connected to the school.
Thanks for the presentation. How do we take this information and apply it to the upcoming school levy? It seems like we've identified things we need to work on. How do we communicate that or we just go to the levy committee? What's the next step in the process?
I think there are very specific things that people have concerns about that are not necessarily tied to the levy. Or I think there are things we need to address as a district to build trust and be more transparent in our decisions and our communication. And I think addressing those things and creating action plans moving forward to consistently be transparent and build trust and understand that we are always in a levy campaign. It is not just when it's on the ballot. We are always working to earn the trust of our community. And I think those are just things we need to think about all the time, separate from a levy campaign. Does that answer your question?
Chuck, there was a similar conversation I had with a, a conversation with. This is what field would work.
Yeah.
And is what are our next steps look like? And I think that's something that we had a good conversation, Kim, about was going deeper into, okay, so these are the areas that are our highest concerns. And I think that we have enough of a turnaround time that we can still go say, now, like Tamara, what you're bringing with the idea of saying, okay, here's the common ground where the major concerns are. Yes, we have obviously a very polarized views in our community. But what are the big issues that everybody is super concerned about? We can dig deeper in those areas and say, okay, what does that look like? Being careful to make sure we don't validate. It's just like the state requirements for the whole voting stuff. We don't want to be careful about how we learn the questions, but say, how can we dig deeper? What does this, what does this look like? I think still allows us to get that important feedback for us as a district to navigate. And this is a great tool to really, and I like that this is not preconceived questions, but it's, it's organic. And that really is a powerful, very impressed by this data side of it. It's awesome. That this can become really real for us. And so I think that this is a good first step for me, for, for our board, at least it's my perspective. But now saying, okay, now that we have a good idea of what the main field looks like with the questions and the concerns, we have an area that we can really dig now. And I think that another round and maybe even a couple more rounds of questionnaires. My concern, I think, is, is as we head into summer, the level of engagement will drop off. And so I would love it if it's a possibility, if we can get a faster turnaround and say, okay, here are the the five main core areas that top the chart on the bar graph. Can we dig deeper into that and have an opportunity to say, before our school year ends, we could, as families kind of, you know, go off for summer and things like that. And that would allow us to have a better idea as we come back for fall to do a lot of planning and saying, okay, what is that look like for us? We'd have really good data to make decisions move forward.
So I mean, runs off of that a little bit. I'm, I'm curious about how much Thought Exchange costs, how often we can use it, and who makes the data pretty? So is that like raw data that communications puts into these awesome graphics for us? How does that work?
Great question. Thought Exchange with about $10,000. More. I know, I also told my head of fellows, $10,000 will look up. But we have unlimited surveys for the next year, which is awesome. And they also do all the data. They created all the graphs, all the comparison, all the reports. We just had to kind of fine tune what we wanted to look like and what we wanted to include. So it's a really robust, awesome data collection tool. And they are really great at walking you through your results too. We had a meeting with our client services rep and she walked us through all the data, what it meant, all the graphs meant. It's really an awesome.
And Erin, if you have a second, could you just briefly talk about the work that you're going to be doing with schools to use Thought Exchange? Working with schools on communication plans. We also want to increase communication and feedback loop for schools and the families that go to that school.
Yeah, so this tool is available to all of our schools, all of our administrators to use for. I mean, you can use it for small things that you're in a meeting or you're asking for feedback during a meeting. You can do all, any kind of survey, really, any kind of question, open ended question that your school wants to ask. So we're planning to do some about what's going well at your school, what do you feel needs improvement? I'm really finding out what, what our community and our families think. And our staff too, for that matter. Okay, and so we'll. Any questions? Erin, Tamara, thank you so much. Really excited to see that. Thank you and see that transact. It would be very valuable for our community and family. Thank you so much for all that you do. And move on to agenda item five point zero three. And we have a budget discussion and spread down front, the chief management officer will update the Florida twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budgets. Okay, I'm ready. So this is our first of mental budget updates between now and August. Second meeting in August, when the board will be presented with a resolution to adopt the budget. So this is kind of the summary of where we are today. And this is the beginning of our conversations with the board about our district priorities and our choices moving forward. And what you would like to see in the budget that is your budget that you adopted to begin this. Okay. So the first thing we do when we start to prepare a budget is we do our enrollment projections for the following year. This first slide represents what our enrollment has anticipated to be. The first column represents what we actually budgeted for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. The second column represents our actual average enrollment as of January. And the blue column represents our projections for next year. That is our traditional building enrollment. And then we add our Sky Valley Education Center and Leaders of Learning Enrollment, and we get our total enrollment. We add running start, so we ran it at five thousand five hundred and forty-five F T E for next year. How this compares is in the traditional building zone. So that four thousand five hundred and eighty-five is approximately a hundred and twelve F T E more than it was when we budgeted a year ago. More than we budgeted for this current year. It is forty-three point one one higher than what we currently had in January. And total enrollment, just as a frame of reference, since nineteen twenties budget, our F T E has gone down seven hundred and thirty-two F T E at traditional buildings. And so that is part of the budget reductions that we've been talking about through the past almost two months now. Is that loss of F T Es since nineteen twenties.
Is that loss of FTEs since nineteen-twenty, since pre-COVID. If we look at our revenues, our revenues for 2021, these are actual revenues. We see here it's been closed. And you see that for State General, our FTR revenue dropped that seven million, no, five million dollars there. And our federal jumped between 2021 and 2122. And the State General dropped because of our reduced enrollment. So we're getting less basic education funding from the state because we had significant fewer students. The federal general grew because we had access to federal dollars. We had access to, all this is the revised budgets of all those federal dollars that we looked at in our budget extension. Those are the federal dollars that are increased for this current year. And so because we had all of those federal dollars for 2022, we did not reduce our staffing for those 732 students that we lost. We continued at higher than normal staffing levels because of cleaning requirements, because of social distancing requirements, because of additional support requirements, and because we had one-time federal dollars to help us through that gap. Does that make sense? And so for next year, 2223, we are looking roughly at $86 million, which is again, almost $14 million less than what we're getting this year. You see that our State General has only gone up by 1.2 million. That's that whole increase that the state used during legislative session. But our federal dollars dropped back down because we don't have access at this point to as much federal dollars. And so that is causing us to have to take a good look at our budget and determine where we can make reductions to bridge this gap. So there's two areas that are causing this gap this year. One is that loss of 793 student FTE that we never fully reduced for. And the rest is half of the levy that we're not going to receive in April pending an election. So we have to budget as though it's not here. And so the revenue that we won't receive in April is approximately $7 million. It's unfortunate that all of the numbers are sevens. So in February, on February 14th, I believe it was, we had a special session. I shared with the board at that time that our gap appeared to be around $21 million. And that seven million of that would be paid for with the levy that we were collecting in October next year. Seven million of it is because of our enrollment reduction and seven million of it is because of the levy that we will not be collecting in April unless we pass a levy. Any questions so far? So the Budget Committee work. We went into this Budget Committee with a very limited timeline. Our scope was to get community feedback. The district didn't necessarily explain the purpose while right out the gate. It took a couple meetings to, to communicate that. We came up with a, this list of reductions. And essentially, most of this is what we do every year when we prepare a budget. We always look at our student and staff ratios. We do that every year. And this year, it's bigger because, like I said before, we pay for some staff out of S R two dollars this year. We have additional parents, we have additional nurses because we have the returning burn brand. We have all these folks because of COVID. It was things that we wouldn't necessarily have done if COVID had never arrived at the middle school district. And so our attempt, when we say rightsizing, is to determine our staffing based on the FTE that we will have in our buildings next year. And again, this is something we do every year. It's just kind of exaggerated because it's picking up what we didn't do for 2022 as well. And so looking at the formulas that we use to staff our schools before COVID hit, before we had to have social distancing in each of the classrooms and before we had to have social distancing in the lunchrooms, before we had to have midday cleanings and, and wiping down the desks and all the PPE, all of that stuff. We're looking at the formula of pre-COVID. And that's how we're determining our staffing sizes. When we, so we're talking about certificated staffing, the paraprofessional staffing that we have on here. We have looked at a group of paras in a particular program. And we're actually not reducing those paras, we're grant funding those paras. So we're shifting them from basic ed dollars to Taiwan dollars. And so a majority of that rightsizing for paraprofessionals is going to be funded by grants. Elimination of Everett Community College and Shoreline Community College. Because that impacts our revenues, we have to remember to include it in our expenditure offset as well. Paying for basic education portion of TOSSes. We have three TOSSes. One was already fully paid out of the grant. And this moves the remaining portion of the other two TOSSes out of basic ed funding into brands as well. So we're finding efficiencies in our brands and, and trying to move staffing that qualifies for the brand use into the brands. Rightsizing custodial staff. And we have using district fund balance at seven million. So our approach was to try to hear people when they were talking to us. We try to listen and use a portion of fund balance. And so we arbitrarily chose a middle ground. And we made actual reductions or proposals for reductions for half, about 14 million. And use fund balance for the other half. And I have more slides to talk about that a bit. As a committee input, we, as an executive cabinet, we created a really big list of potential reductions. We presented it to the Budget Review Committee. We added some based on the feedback from the committee after the second meeting. And then we asked the folks to prioritize the list. And these were items that were at the top of the list that the, that the community, that the committee prioritized. And that was the five for our unpaid days for district leadership, the three percent reductions that you heard about earlier. Pausing solution, treating the professional learning community PLC. That was that three-year contract that the board approved last year. And we are in year one now. We are pausing the new vehicle leases. Stopping professional development at 100,000 that's in learning and teaching budget currently. A desktop alert system, that is a system that hasn't been implemented at the district yet. And so we're pausing that. Experiential learning was a $50,000 allocation that the board requested several years ago. And that 50,000 was divided between the traditional buildings plus leaders of learning. And it was distributed based on student FTE in the buildings. And that 50,000 was to provide lower-cost field trips for families or to be able to bring things into the building that benefited all students in the building and to increase their hands-on, non-book study learning. Does that make sense? Three percent reduction of school, of school budgets, adoption of new materials for K-8 science and a digital learning conference. And so these proposal added up to 7,122,500 in reductions or estimated reductions. And a $7 million request to use fund balance for existing expenditures. Questions the board may have at this point? Fund balance for 2122. The projected ending fund balance for this year, as we discussed when we did the budget extension at our last meeting, is projected to be about $14,124,769. That's 14.05% of our 2122 projected revenue. Our fund balance at the end of 2223, if the board were to authorize the use of 7 million or some other figure, would be approximately 7,124,769. That is 8.21% of our projected 2223 revenue. The budget for 2223 is still very fluid. That's the projected revenue as of today. The state has not yet released their F203 or the revenue tool for us to use to calculate our revenue for our actual budget yet. So this is a projection based on our forecast five software. And then just manual first, first place through like local receipts and things like that. Again, the board will be provided multiple updates between now and August. And our goal is to work together to come up with a 2223 budget that the board and the committee will be comfortable with adopting for next year. Levy impacts. If the board approves a proposition for the November ballot and it's passed by the voters, then our 2223 budget would technically be neutral. Meaning that we would not need to use the 7 million of fund balance because we would receive them in April of '23. So in effect, if we build a budget using 7 million, we went out to the voters in November and they said yes, then ultimately, our budget at that time would be neutral. And our budget moving forward would be a normal budget year. If the district has no levy, if no levy to levy proposition in November or a ballot measure is not passed, then the budget process one year from today would require 14 million plus cost of living increase reduction without the benefit of fund balance. So there would not be a safety net one year from now. And the reason why this is in the slide deck is to make sure that we're all aware that, that, this is an important decision. And we have to make wise decisions and be very clear on what it means. And if this is the path that we go, then we will have to do our darndest to make sure that we hear our community and we address their concerns and that we gain their confidence so that our levy is passed. Budget Advisory Committee. The biggest thing that I learned from this whole process is that what the community wants, what the district wants, is time and involvement. And so my promise to the Budget Advisory Committee throughout the meetings that we had is that once the books are closed in October, I want to start a Budget Advisory Committee like we have it so many other districts. And essentially, their job would be to go through every line item in the budget and know the budget so that when things hit like this, everybody already knows what's in the budget and we can make smart decisions and be a collective mind and more minds thinking, broader thoughts and bigger ideas. And so that's my goal, is to start that as soon after closing the books as possible, early November, so that we can start the education process and everybody can learn the budget before we have to start the actual budgeting process for 2324. And that would be an ongoing, year-round Budget Advisory Committee. And they would also be asked to provide updates to the board on their thoughts and recommendations on big things moving forward. So you would be able to see the board and just me. So that, that's my vision for after this year, but yeah, we'll get through this year first. Next steps. So there's two things that the board needs to make decisions on. Not, actually, three, but two are on here. Not necessarily tonight, but in the near future. And that is, will the board authorize the use of up to $7 million of fund balance for the development of the 2223 budget? Essentially, what that does is it allows us to move forward with the development of the budget. It will not stop the conversations we have with the board regarding potential future savings, potential different savings for this year. It just gets us going on the budget development process. And next, is the board ready for a ballot proposal for the November convention? The deadline is August 2nd. So again, it's time, a decision that you have to make today, you'll learn tomorrow. But we do have to have those conversations. And if we are having a proposition, we have to have it to the county by August 2nd. So it's a decision that has to be made before we all go with it somewhere. Okay? So those are the two things. The third thing is that on the business agenda item this evening, there is a, is essentially a resolution to provide the district, the board permission or authorization to do a reduction or if necessary. We truly believe at this point that there will be enough attrition to cover the loss or the reduction of any staff that we need to reduce with the exception of any specific endorsements. So for example, if you need an English teacher, but you don't have any, you need an English teacher. And so with, with the exception of that, we're not 100% sure. But that is what we think at this point, based on what we've heard. Again, if the board authorize, if, if we want to be able Again, if the board authorize, if if we want to be able to reduce force um per our collective bargaining agreement, the um MVA and the WVA need to know by the end of April. They have to have two weeks' notice before we have a reduction in force. So with that document, then um we can begin working with HR to start looking at um specific details and updating on whether or not it's also necessary for one of us, that's for you. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Um so you answered my uh one of my questions, but why now on the the consideration of the resolution, such as point 03, this item authorization to approve reduction in force? Uh is that because we have to do notifications of staff by May 10th and therefore that gives them a two week?
No, we have to notify the WVA and MVA by the end of April.
Right, because we, they have to have two weeks because we have to notify by May 10th. And then, and so this is our last meeting before then?
Unless we call such a session.
Couple of questions that I have that go on this, I'm gonna start from my first one. Can you bring up slide seven, please? Is she still here? Would Everett County College and Shoreland Community College use, eliminate user data program? You mentioned that that would reduce revenue as well. Is that a $3 million net gain for us in our budget after we reduce the revenue as well? Or is that just our costs?
That is just our costs.
So what would be the net difference for that? What does that could do for our budget?
Um we um actually lose about $60,000.
So it's, it doesn't help us that much, let's get rid of it?
Well, it does because our indirects that we use at a district level are are waiver for some of the services that are required at those programs with them kids being identified by the state as our kids. Um were beginning to cost us actually more than what we have for indirects.
When you look at the, I like that term, the right sizing of our staff, we're looking at, on that slide, $2.7 million is what your first bullet point said in slide seven. Uh for that, how many positions are you looking at? And what is the estimated attrition rate of the number of staff members who are already applying? I know we have our HR report. And what is the estimated attrition numbers already?
I don't know exactly how many we've actually received um notices from as far as actually admitting that no resigning or retiring. But verbally, I've been told that we have um attrition greater than the um 60, well, it's 2.7%.
So then you don't, and sort of confirm, then you don't estimate that we would need to to utilize the reduction of force option? We need to have that tool available if?
Yes, sir. And it depends on two factors. One, if everybody that's notified the district actually doesn't because they're not allocated until they actually put it in writing, change their minds. And um the other is if we um if somebody has one endorsement, but we need a different endorsement.
On that page also, it looks at right sizing with the paraprofessional staffing. That would save us $358,000. But on the following slide, we have a third group of staff members. They were specifically paraprofessionals or, excuse me, classified staff which is beyond just paraprofessionals. But I don't see, I know that Mike doesn't want me to mention those, it's already short there. But um we're looking at the eight, the uh the administration part. So on slide eight, the second bullet point. Is this, is $250,000 the total of administration? Only 3%? That's this, I know we have a lower number of staff members. But are we not having there that we can look at and look at? I haven't been saying it, but lowering positions in that area because this is also something we're talking about, our thought exchange conversations. We're talking about transparency, we're talking about top-heavy administrative costs. These are concerns, and we're also talking about transparency where we even have our budget committee meetings and people are having concerns about those areas. Are there other areas that we can still reduce in in that arena? Because we're reducing a huge amount of money, $2.7 million in certificated. We're reducing over $250,000, but we're only reducing $250,000 in the administration side. So is there more area that we can, you you make up in that area so that we have less impact in classrooms?
Um yeah, the bullet point above that is also administrators. So that is one of the, yeah, and I understand the percentage is um seems smaller. Um we did spend a lot of time in exec cabinet going over um percentages of total budget that liberal school districts spent on district office, district administration relative to our St. Helmut County districts. And we shared that at um our budget committee meeting, so Jen, Jen has already got to see it. And our percentage um for last year was um 6.43% of our total budget was spent on district administrative expenses. And by district administrative expenses, I mean the board, superintendent's office, the the fiscal office, HR, communications, transportation supervision, the social maintenance ground supervision, and the very low costs we have in food service supervision since we contract that out. Um so I compared all of those costs relative to our neighboring districts. Um using Forecast Five, it gets their information directly from the F196s for all of our districts. And we were above the average for our district office. Um does that mean that we shouldn't talk about tightening our belts? Not necessarily. But um we wanted, because we're really close to that decision, we wanted to have an honest look to see if it appeared as though relative to our neighbors, we were spending more than our neighbors and didn't appear that that was the case. Historically, since I've been here, we've always been around 7% for district administration.
And you calculated those numbers, does that include the cost for this facility? Go right, right now. If we were to do that, what would that look like in comparative to our neighbors?
I would have to do that, and I would let you know.
Are we having future budget committee meetings with the community that's been a part of that? Or are we done with those?
Um we're technically done with those. Our conversations now are shifting to board direction. What the board will plan this to pursue?
Thank you, there's no questions.
Thank you. Do you have your job for me?
I have a little question. I think there has been a question about, and I think that this has been answered, where the attrition may nullify the need for a reduction in force. How does, and if so, how do all of the open positions that we have at the district, which I just looked at our our open positions and for non-summer certificated, we've got nine openings and we have two pages of classified positions open currently. So how does, how does that, how do all of those open positions impact this right sizing that's going on?
When we, when we budget, vacant positions are included. And so um they're considered staff we have because we've advertised for them and planning on spending them. So unless we have a conversation about um right sizing or reductions, then the vacant positions stay in. Does that make sense? So it's not staff in addition to the vacant positions. All the vacant positions are on our staffing sheets as long as we have them.
What happens to uh a certificated staff member who receives a reduction in force with that position? Are they able to take over one of the nine open positions? And I'm sorry for my ignorance about how all of that works.
Yeah, I think honestly that um I I I don't poor, poor, poor Dan. I don't work in HR, so I don't know the details on how all of that works. And you've all met Dan, right? It's his first day.
Welcome to something by having introduced Dan Johnson.
This is Dan's very first day.
Welcome. These are your new executive director of HR. Welcome, Dan.
Yeah, we we will work to move staff to open positions. And um we, for instance, not just with those vacant positions, but with resignations or retirements. So we'll work to shift people um in all possible to avoid actual rifts. And that's actually something, today's my first day, but I've already started on that. We've been working together, looking closely at those options. So um the the, the thing that we don't want to have happen is to to, when when somebody's ripped, they can be recalled. We don't want to have to unnecessarily rip somebody only to turn around a couple months later, maybe August, bring them back and cause them that unnecessary trauma. Um it's not pleasant to receive that. So we're working really hard to look at all options. But we are, you know, the timeline, uh May 15th was actually the 13th this year, because it falls on a Sunday. Um so basically, the request is to ask for the authorization. HR department is gonna work um as hard as possible to um to make, you know, make adjustments, look at vacant positions, look at resignations, look at uh retirements, to move people if necessary, hopefully not, but as necessary to keep people.
Okay, thank you. So something, and uh, you know, this is not my area of expertise, right? I I do do not fully understand the way that school districts and buildings are structured, who gets hired where and why, why that would change over time. And I feel like I've asked a lot of questions and gotten answers, but what I still see is just sort of a general, never the twain shall meet, is that we have this idea of reduction in force. We have community and a budget committee that came out with reductions for the district offices being one of the top recommendations. And then we have what is actually happening in the schools, which is at least a perception of being really understaffed, right? We have teachers who aren't getting their prep time. We don't have substitutes. We have people who maybe don't have the paras support that they need in the classroom, right? And I, and I, I feel frustrated because all I can see is those barriers and I don't feel like I have the skill or the knowledge to come up with a resolution and that's, that's not where I'm used to being. I'm used to being a problem solver. And so I guess I'm asking for help. One, I guess I I think I'm asking if I am correct in in my perception. And again, I I understand that there are reasons. But I'm, I'm worried about um, I'm in looking at these recommendations, I'm really worried about the path that we're on. And I'm worried about how it is going to be perceived and potentially expand the divide between our district office and leadership and our buildings and our community and our family.
Thanks for following up, which is Sarah's question. I think that having a spouse in the district, one of the things that I've been seeing is a perception. We're looking at, with the reduction in force, it directly affects class sizes. I don't know that it affects, if I'm, if I'm correct in how I'm asking this, does it affect more class sizes or does it affect the substitute issue? Because from what I'm hearing, what I've even seen in my own building where I work, is the issue a lot of times isn't the number of staff or the number of paraprofessionals, it's the number of substitutes. And so, and that's not necessarily part of our certificated staff pool as much, I think. And so when there's no substitute, then my wife here in class doesn't get PE or music. When they don't get PE or music, she doesn't get a prep period. When she does get a prep period, she's usually subbing for somebody else. Because, but half the time, the specialist is is substituting as well. And then at the secondary level, we get one period, usually it's a prep period, and we're substituting for each other. So it's not necessarily the number of staff in the building to the FTE of the students ratio, but it's the fact that we can't find substitutes, it's like we can't find bunch drivers. And am I incorrect in that or, because is that the issue or is it the number of staff the issue?
Well, that's, that's, you're right, the substitute issue is a separate issue. And that's a statewide problem, probably a nation-wide problem that has to do with labor shortages. There are things we can do, I'm not sure, I haven't dug into this. Um but we will look um to boost our substitute pool with um emergency substitutes recruitment. Using your par educator force to to seek out those that can be emergency certified. I'm not sure exactly what's been done, but those will be things that can can help um help address that problem. The, the issue on the table as far as reducing the number of teaching positions in the district is not necessarily going to address the substitute issue.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so what I'm hearing, especially because we had the presentation for Thought Exchange right before, so that's fresh. Um but I'm just wondering how we're applying what we heard uh through that survey, how we're applying it to the recommendations. I have to ask that question. Uh how it is that we are applying about the transparency or the top-heavy, even if that's what is the perception? And really giving our community clarity around that. I have been through, I think with, I mean, I've had one-on-ones with you, Brenda, where I'm trying to understand the budget and then I was on the committee and, hey, you know, it's a process to even understand because it's complex. And awareness is uncomfortable. I think we're uncomfortable right now, but I think providing clarity would allow me some comfort. Uh but I guess I'm just, okay, let me just ask a question, because that was a ramble. Um how long would it take to gather the information? I know it's your first day, Dan, welcome to the team. But how long would it take to gather the information about risks and about who we are retiring? So we have solid evidence?
Well, I made good progress today. Um I am still a full-time in Stanford, so I'm using some vacation. I could be here a day and a half, a week, and that is, that is my top priority. Uh Jeff Sherwood, who's been hired, um he's, he's retired HR, he's working in, we met this morning and decided uh what I'm gonna focus on during my time here, and that is, that is my top priority. Now, as far as how long, um we don't have very long. So uh I'm hoping, uh at least by a week from today, I'll have a pretty good idea. Problem is, it is uncertain, so um it's not likely um by, but well, hopefully. It's not likely to become crystal clear by May 13th, but it should become much clearer. So the reason there's uncertainties is because of those verbal, we have rumors and we have verbal statements that that people are leaving. I know that two, two, uh I don't know if there were retirements or resignations, but two notices of separation came in today. Um and then that gives you some clarity on two more positions that you know, okay, these are two positions that can be reduced without affecting any individual teacher. Um and so as those come in, that breaks some clarity. But we're also taking uh taking a close look at, at, and this is one of the conversations we had today of proposed reductions and exactly what's that's gonna do to class size and how it's gonna impact students. So there's kind of two things at work. One, we don't want a negative impact on students. Two, we don't want to have to let go of employees. We don't want to have to do that, especially if we don't have to. So we're kind of working on both of those at the same time.
Brenda, is a week from today in total? I've heard you say that, maybe like a week.
Well, I said a week from today, I will know, I'll have a better picture of, I'm still gathering information. I'll have a better picture of knowing at every level what the projections are as far as who has, who has notified us that they're leaving, but also what is their area of where are they certified? And, and then where the reductions have to be made and where those certain impacts are.
In order to meet, I'm assuming this is your question, so I apologize if it's not. But I believe that we would have until the 28th before a decision had to be made because we would have to notify on the 28th.
Is that your question?
That was my question, thank you very much.
Jim, and I just, I want to add that I think part of the transparency is us understanding what the concerns are, doing some research and making sure that we're answering people's questions and addressing people's concerns. And so when the, the committee was, well, first of all, when the Thought Exchange pieces were coming in and then the committee had the questions, some things that we asked Brenda were, are we overstuffed at the DO? And how do our salaries compare to surrounding districts? Because I wanted to make sure, just first of all, I have no idea. And so that's some of the information that she shared with you, is that in terms of just a percentage, that doesn't mean by department, that doesn't mean we're still not going to be looking to see where we can, we can possibly cut, reduce, do something. But I think there might be a misconception that we are overstuffed in the district office beyond what we need. And I don't know that there's a lot here that can be cut to make up for the shortages that we have. Again, that doesn't mean that we're not going to try, but I think this is going to be part of our communicating out where we actually are with things. And I think to Dan's point about moving staff, we have staff members who have, we call it the golden ticket certification, where K-12, you can teach anything in the world. Those are, those are probably more of our senior staff members and they have some seniority rights. But looking at where people are qualified to teach and seeing where we can fill in and do that kind of stuff. And then with that and with attrition, we're hoping that we don't have to do any of the rifts. The rifts come where, all of a sudden, we have, we have positions open in math and we're overstuffed in English. And that's where a rift might happen. It's like, we need more math teachers, we don't need three English teachers. And I, that's not a real thing right now. That's not what is, I mean, it could be, but I don't think so. But if that makes sense, that's where we have to look at. Secondary, it's a little tricky. I also want to say that I appreciate that Dan's coming in and he and Jeff are going to start thinking about this, but we do have to get creative with subs. One of the things that we could look at is, as we're looking at rifts, we could have building-designated subs. That might be something that we have to do. But that's not a budget cut anymore, that's a budget add. And so we have to factor that in as we're trying to present a budget, a balanced budget to you. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not going to stop looking at type. We're not going to stop looking and listening to creative ways to solve this problem. And we're not going to stop trying to communicate with our community about how important this levy is. And I don't know that we've gotten into discussing what happens if we don't pass this levy. If, if, if we don't pass the levy in November, this is going to look like a walk in the park. And I think it's really important for people to understand that we depend on our district office staff, our building staff, our bus drivers, our food service workers. We all have a role to play. We talk a lot about the red bread. As an acting superintendent or a chief academic officer, I need to be able to really pay attention to my direct impact on students. And so I think we need to be really careful when we're talking about employees because we're all valued employees. I think that's all I have to say.
Can I just ask for a few definitions?
Certainly.
Attrition, attrit, is that, I don't know, I wrote it down really quickly.
Yeah, attrition is folks that are by their choice not here anymore, like the resumes and the retirees. That's our attrition.
Awesome, thank you. FTE?
Full-time unemployment.
So we use that term for, when you're speaking of students?
Students and staff.
Students and staff.
Different definitions of what makes up a full-time student and what makes up a full-time staff member.
So we're talking about rightsizing based on student.
Rightsizing, when we're rightsizing staff, it's based on stu, certificated staff, defined in Monroe is seven hours a day for 185 days because their contract is bound under 25. That's one full-time FTE for certificated staff. For classified staff, regardless which districts they run, classified staff is eight hours a day for 260 days. And so partial FTE, like if they work four hours a day, for 260 is 25 hours a day. But it's, it's their number of hours relative to 2080 years is what makes up a classified staff.
And rightsizing.
Rightsizing, rightsizing as used in our proposals is correcting the student-staff ratio relative to a formula that's based on CPAs that we have in the district.
Courtney, can you clarify even a little bit more about what is our staffing model? That was a term you used with me that I don't believe that we've discussed before.
Our staffing, are you talking about our staffing sheets or? See, we got our triggers in, that's it, okay. Our triggers in our CPA. So we don't have a section in our MVA collective bargaining agreement that says class sizes will be. We have triggers per grade level of when staff members start receiving overload pay for having too many students in their classroom. So we try to stay under that trigger. So for at the high school, it's 28. So if we exceed 28 in a classroom, then the teacher gets paid extra for each student of that trigger in the CPA.
And I just, and I want to add another piece to this because it starts getting even deeper. As we're looking at staffing models and ratios, and as we're looking at substitutes, at some point, the amount of money that we pay teachers to teach during their prep becomes more expensive than having a building-designated sub. So that's some of the math that we're going to have to work through, and that's just the reason I brought up the building sub. The other thing is overload pay. At some point, as you're looking at your teachers, and if, if a teacher is one student over, the overload pay makes sense. If all of the teachers have two or three students over, then it starts to look, then we have to start looking at where are those overload happening? If it's happening in grades K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5 by 2, it gets very difficult to hire another teacher to teach a K by class, you know, you, you can't, it's, it's difficult to split kids up. But if you were paying a lot of overload in a grade in like one or two grade levels, then it's worth not paying the overloads and hiring an additional teacher and taking those one or two grades if you're going to do a split class and hiring another teacher and balancing. So there's a lot of finesse that starts coming in as we get into June, July and August, and then of course in September when the kiddos walk in. That might tell us a different story. Brenda's pretty good, and what she predicts now is really very, very close to what we get in September and October.
Any other questions?
Director Phil? I'm terrified of using the fund balance. And if it doesn't pass the following year, April 3, 24, that's terrifying. What can, what can the board do to help?
We have to all use our non-working hours and advocate, inform, be as open and honest about what it will truly mean, which means that over the next several weeks, exec cabinet will have to come up with that list of potentially what would have to go if the levy didn't pass in the future, so that we can define for our voters what we would do if it didn't pass. And again, it's all in an informative manner and not in a, if you don't do this, then this will happen manner. Just fact-based. I know that we have a committee, community committee, that will be advocating and so providing facts to the committee will be important. Volunteering hours after personal hours will probably help. But most important, being involved. I think that every, everybody should be involved to ensure that this happens for the district.
I just have a couple of quick follow-up questions. So I think we did hear another definition of rightsizing, because I have that same question about what it means. I just did a really quick search, so I have not at all vetted this resource, but it's a human resources website and it says, "Rightsizing the workforce means redefining job descriptions and reorganizing employee structures to maintain efficiency and properly equip the company to meet its objectives." I really hope that going forward, we, we and we keep coming back to needing to have a strategic plan and, and needing to express our visions of work. And I, I hope that we can either communicate that effectively now or in the very near future to be able to answer some of these questions about the budget. I have one other question that is just, I'm having trouble letting go of where we keep talking about substitutes. And I'm, I'm not a substitute teacher, nor do I want to be. I'm curious about who those substitutes are. And in my mind, I would imagine that often it is former teachers who have retired, who might be willing to come back, or teachers who have left the position for, you know, family reasons or, or life or whatever. And I'm if, if Monroe School District is not demonstrating to a current staff, either certificated, classified, that they are valued, I worry that not only are we having difficulty there, but that, that we're exacerbating another problem of these substitutes. We're missing an opportunity to be able to bring people back in to solve some of the other problems that we have. Because that makes, I feel like I'm not, I'm kind of wrapped up in it and needing to chew on it for a bit. But I, I appreciate the comments about being creative and, and solving problems creatively. I really like the idea of a building-designated sub. That's something that, that ends up being reasonable. I think my, my biggest concern in looking at the list of potential cuts is, is the updated science curriculum. I don't see how that supports any of what we talked about here in supporting student success. We are willing to I just, I, for me, as the one member of a board, but also somebody who has started working with everybody else, I really don't feel like that aligns with what we're doing and our vision forward. And so as we move forward and looking at our budget, to me, that seems like a pretty severe impact, direct impact to students to have outdated curriculum, especially science. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Valverde.
Thanks, Director Johnson. And just to clarify, the budget is still pretty fluid. And we'll continue to have budget meetings. And so the decision or what we're having to have a conversation about today during that resolution is, well, let me see, it's about the rifts.
Authorizing.
Authorizing. Yeah. So authoring, just to repeat exactly what you said, authorizing the ability to utilize the tool and the tool being rifts. So just wanted to clarify. But it's going to be uncomfortable for a little bit. Nathan, any other questions?
Yeah. So with an emergency fund, how much do we currently have in savings as a board?
You mean in our fund balance?
Yes.
A little over $14 million. Right now, today, we have approximately $8 million, but we anticipate having $14 by the end of the year.
And how do we get more?
We have a lot of federal grants that are pulled as of slow in pay, yes. So we just received earlier this week, as a matter of fact, well, late last week, we received the $1.4 million that we were expecting from the Emergency Connectivity Fund. So we've been waiting for that since October. So we finally received that. And as we spend our Ezra dollars, we'll be able to claim those as well. As we start to claiming the additional federal dollars that we just received grants for, we'll be able to claim those as well. And we're still expecting more from Emergency Connectivity as well. So federal dollars are on like state dollars, you have to spend them first and then file a claim and then wait. Whereas state dollars, they're 72 every month on a certain percentage basis. So our budget for '21, '22 is very federal grant-heavy. And so there's a lot of waiting for the revenue to come in.
Okay. So we use this emergency fund, how much is that going to be approximately? How much do you think will be left in the emergencies fund or any other emergencies that we have?
We have, like I said, we're anticipating to have approximately $14 million in our fund balance at the end of the year. We will have approximately $7.1 million if we use 7 million. So we're proposing to use a little bit less than half. And our fund balance policy is currently 5% plus $1,115,000. So our fund balance at 7.1 million is 8.02%, or something like that. So we'll still be above fund balance policy.
Okay, so what can that money be used for and used for any retirement support?
Anything that the board authorizes ultimately, yes.
Yeah, good to know, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much, Brenda. Dan, you guys were cut out for you, thank you.
I would like to make a motion for a body break.
All new degrees ago. All right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take a body break. We'll be back in ten minutes. Eight forty-one PM. Thank you.
That's going for you, Gina.
We are back from our break. In eight forty-one PM. We are moving on to agenda item six point zero one, consideration of grants. We have, it's recommended that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept grants received in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. We receive grants from Faircap Pride, six hundred dollars concessions payout, Salem Woods PTA, four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents for adaptive slash sensory resources for S L T classes, and Salem Woods PTA, four hundred dollars for P E equipment. And the grant's year-to-date is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-eight and thirty-two cents. Is there a motion? I move that Monroe School District Board of Directors approve item six point oh one, consideration of grants. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept grants received in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or say aye. It's supposed to say aye.
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 Aye. The agenda items pass five to zero. Moving on to agenda item six point zero two, consideration of revised facility use fees. It is recommended that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the temporary fee structure change while we engage with community leaders for a new fee structure recommendation to be recommended in summer two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the temporary fee structure change while we engage with community leaders for a new fee structure recommendation to be recommended in summer two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the temporary fee structure change while we engage with community leaders for a new fee structure recommendation to be recommended in summer two thousand twenty-two. Discuss, excuse me, discussion. I actually have a question about this. I emailed Dublin from facilities, but I wanted to revise it to include the high school as well. So currently, it just includes Park Place Middle School baseball fields. And I was hoping to also include the high school baseball fields with that adjustment.
Does it include Park Place Middle School football field as well?
I.
Is it just the baseball?
It might be just the baseball field. Because it is super specific. Yeah, Vic, hey Vic. Can we ask you a couple questions?
Sure.
Thank you. And then, Vic.
Questions? So did it include Park Place? Park Place is included in that. It is already in the high school. It was added in the new order fee, and the regular price was thirty-eight dollars, if I'm good enough to remember or not. Thirty-five? It was at thirty-five dollars, and we, I think it was the thirteen dollar increase to get it to fifty. Is that, am I doing that right? Because I have a chart for it. Okay, good, because I don't have one. So we reverted that back to the thirty-eight or thirty-five, excuse me.
Victor, does the, does, you said it includes Park Place, but does it include Park Place turf football field as well?
I believe it's the facility, all of the facilities.
All the turf facilities, okay. That was my question. So they use that field as well by the.
That's correct.
Any questions, Tom?
One more clarification, it was only for the class three, the classification and description three people, who were the in-district youth sports, right?
That was correct. That was what was discussed at our meeting on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
So follow up on your question, sir. That, so would that include our Y M C and our Monroe School Club?
If they're in the classification three, and they had the kits from Monroe.
Yeah.
In district.
I want to make sure that that's what's happening on our local clubs used to. They're in classification two.
Because we have the inter, inter-area agreement with them.
Yeah, the inter-local.
And so I think they fall into the classification and description two.
Yeah, I believe they are a step up. It was the step three, I believe, is when we had our major discussions about where the new fee had gone in and we reverted back to previous to twenty twenty-one in June.
President, if you're gonna make that adjustment for the high school, then I think we might make a motion for that.
There's already a motion on the table.
You can make a amendment to that.
I think we have to strip down this motion and then re-motion. The motion. All in favor, say aye. Hold a post, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May the agenda item has not passed, you're at a five. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the temporary fee structure as discussed to include the high school, while we engage with community leaders for a new fee structure recommendation to be recommended in summer two thousand twenty-two? Is there any motion?
I think you just made it. My second. And you asked for a motion. I'll make the motion. Some of.
Okay, there is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the temporary fee structure as discussed to include the high school, while we engage with community leaders for a new fee structure recommendation to be recommended in summer two thousand twenty-two. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, agenda items pass five to zero. Moving on to agenda item six point zero three, consideration of resolution number six dash two zero two two. Is there a motion? Consideration of resolution number six dash two zero two two. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors accept consideration of resolution six point zero two two to set the budget priorities for the twenty twenty-three school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Sorry, my screen is refreshing. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, it's time for refreshing for me. There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve resolution number six dash two zero two two. Discussion? Well, that's in there.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
As far as timeline, I don't think this is even exact, and I can't tell the twenty eighth, because twenty eighth is that Friday, we have to let him know. I know that this is a tool that we're authorizing the ability to use if necessary. But before we use something like that, since a very, as a, as a teacher, it's a huge message. And I'm very hesitant about making that.
Are there questions, comments? There's a motion on table. My votes. All in favor, say aye. All votes?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. The agenda item has approval. All right, it's failed. Zero to five. Okay, agenda item six point zero four, consideration of health curriculum, this is the first reading. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? And this is being first reading, so that's just.
Should we, we shouldn't have a reading, it's just a first review, not approving it. Not the way it should look at it. Can I say something about this?
Let's be, during the discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a motion? So we can discuss it.
So.
Is there a second? So, second. That Monroe School District approved the first reading of the health curriculum. Discussion?
This is on business. I had a conversation with our superintendent superintendent this morning. It was, he consented to the agenda. The reason, or who would feel that it is on business is I had a conversation and were asked in our past, and you know, only being on the districtal committee, districtal materials committee, that when it was first reading, those were business items, not consent agenda items. And so it was for us to approve that this would or maybe it would be a first reading, or not approve the curriculum, so we have to go through the suitings with what happens. And so that has been how we've done it with other curriculums that announced, and we talked to Al Trumbull about that as well. And so he confirmed that it was, so we want to make sure that we're following best practices with that. That was your question, why that's on here? That was one of the changes to our agenda.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to superintendent consent agenda. Agenda item seven point zero one, accounts available vouchers, and it's the approval of the April fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two A P vouchers. They were approved at the March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. And these are pre-approval of the April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two A P vouchers. Uh, we have our human resources report, we've already met, Dan, who is, thank you, Dan. We have seven point zero three payroll, so pre-approval of the April two thousand twenty-two payroll. We have policy updates and their second reading of Quasta, policy number four two zero zero, parent access and safe and early learning environment. Seven point zero five revised high school labor reform. At the January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two regular business meeting, the board approved a graduation waiver. And we want to seven point zero six approval of the superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve the superintendent consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor? Or sorry, discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to number eight, board consent agenda. Item eight point zero one, and it's from March twenty-two thousand twenty-two, physical enrollment and public records request report. And moving on to eight point zero three, approval of the board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the board consent agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion in the second to that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Then move on to nine point zero one, board report, comments, suggestions. We do have an upcoming superintendent chat by day, April twenty-fifth, as I've given them. And should we have any reports, comments, or suggestions? Director Johnson?
Thank you. So a couple things. I got to go to the Quasta equity training last week. That was my first sort of training as a director. It was really fun. It was great to meet other directors around the state. We were up in the Catacorus, and the education district office there is right on the water. And it is a very distracting and beautiful view. So if anybody gets the opportunity to do a, a meeting or a training up there, I would highly recommend it. And because I had work up there, the next day I actually got to stay the night and have some alone time, which was really fantastic for any, for any parents. I highly recommend the experience. We had a lot of conversations and, and we're working on training that aligns with the conversations that we're having as a board and as a district. And a lot of conversations about belonging and dignity that really stuck out to me. Belonging, I feel like we've talked about a lot, and, and ensuring everyone's dignity is maintained is something that, or words at least, that I haven't heard quite as much, and it really struck up board with me. I thought that that was great. So that was wonderful. And then the other thing I wanted to report on was going to the cabaret night at the high school. It was, it was awesome. It was incredible. There is so much remarkable talent in this district. And what I thought was really neat was that this was a night where students and staff and graduates who have already left and came back were getting to perform pieces that they really wanted to share with the community and that they wanted to do. It was just wonderful to see. And, you know, as a, as, I'm, I'm now forty, and so I'm, I'm more identifying with the parents who are proud of these people who look like young adults instead of just the little kids. And they really, I, I shared with Mr. Lowen that I had to buy a chocolate chip cookie just to get the napkin because I needed to wipe my tears, because there was just so much creativity being expressed, and it was really beautiful. So I'd encourage anybody who gets a chance, about the Adams family coming up to, to check it out and support our students. Really cool. Thanks.
Chairman Campbell?
I have the privilege of touring three of our facilities with our superintendent. And so we went to Ida Education Center, the hidden jam of the Monroe School District. They have such amazing things going on there. And I was just blown away. I love seeing some of what the students were doing. I love seeing how creative they, they have been and innovative as a staff. Very, very, very impressed with what's going on at Sky Valley. Obviously, you're a parent there, you already know how amazing they are, you're giving them praises. But I, I finally had a chance to sit down with, with the principal Karen and really just get a chance to walk through. And I told her, tell me the good and the bad in the academy. And she did not hold back, and I appreciate that. But it was just really, really good to see what their challenges are, but all the field they're overcoming and what they're doing. It is absolutely awesome. And looking at Austin, that's a minute short. So just saying, that's, that's how awesome I'm, I put my son there, so. And then we went over to Frank Wagner Elementary, which I have been to before as, you know, the gopher for my wife and she sat there briefly and carrying all of her stuff in, carrying all of her stuff out, and then the kindergarten night as well. But I had a chance to have a sit-down chat for quite a while with their principal, with Google, and to see, and he took me around all the different classrooms. And they are so jam-packed in that school, there are so many kids. But what I love is, it's like, all the kids fighting. And they have a very significant student there right now. And it just blows my mind, we talked about their maximum capacity possible, which they're very close. And some of the challenges that they're, they're having and the solutions that they're looking at in the next year. And, um, especially helping the kindergarten, getting them ready. And the whole idea of how do we watch kids successfully from the very beginning? Because when they're not there, it's just playing catch-up and you just fall further and further behind. So, so, um, their, their, uh, conference room is just full of charts and they're tracking kids and how can they support those and where they're moving along in the charts as well. And so also being innovative about what that looks like for their incoming kindergarteners this next year, which will extend now. And then we ran over and I went for a very long time, I felt like we got laid to the front. And, um, got to see my daughter's first grade teacher last year, she was in her first grade last year, and that was kind of cool. And got to, uh, peek at some of the classrooms and, uh, what Mr. Presley is doing there as well and his team. And really enjoyed those conversations as well, they have some incredible, incredible things. There's circle time they talk about, Derek, what was it called, the, where they were like talking about their, um, their feelings at the end, what is that called though, what is that, that strategy that they're using? Do you remember?
It could be circle time, it could be, um.
I thought he had a name for it, that was just something, anyway, that's okay. But it was a really cool way for the kids to really process emotions and process problem solving as well, and the teachers were down there and modeling that with them as well. And so it was super cool because in a classroom I have a teardrop microphone because, so you can actually not, you know, lose your voice every day. And so the teacher, they used some sort of a talking stick type thing. So they have a little stuffed animal that had, that was like, there was a bear hiding the microphones, the kids use that as they pass you around and they can talk into it. And it was, it was, it was actually really cute, but it was, it was a really great time to watch kids process and negotiate interpersonal relationships, which is a huge skill, especially at that age. And so I was really impressed with how they were doing that, um, and modeling that, we sat in some classrooms, so. I enjoyed it, I loved eating her crosshairs in a time, and so I was good to visit those.
Director Barnes? Director Lloydfield?
During the last board meeting, I demonstrated some unexpected remarks and I wanted to just talk about the context of that, you know? I have a lot of years under my belt and I've made a mistake or two, I want to own up to it. In fact, speaking about young directors, I'm twenty-five years your senior, so I've had many more, many mistakes and opportunities. Uh, I talked to, back to superintendent Whitworth, we had a meeting and we talked about how we can improve, uh, coordination and the way the agenda was developed. Essentially, you know, I had a lot of emotion and tension and it just built up and the way it came across was unexpected. Uh, but I, I really, what I, what I intended to do with my motion is just to move the discussion about the diversity and equity to a, a board workshop and have a discussion on that. Little did I know that there was such a comprehensive presentation that was going to be taking place. So anyway, I'm, uh, we can have a, we've put that on the agenda for some time, it's a board workshop that we appreciate having a discussion amongst the members. That's all.
Thank you, Director Lloydfield. Um, I'm going to repeat something that I read in Brene Brown, I think she said in the channel and said, it's from her book, so I cannot say her edit. But she said, it's going to take awareness, commitment, and work every single day to overcome. And so I hope that encourages us as a team like this, it's all in Monroe and it's work and it's commitment and it is every single day. Um, we're up here, we're directors and we work really hard too. And, and I, my heart goes out to all of our students, our teachers, our admin, our D O because I see how much work and effort and commitment it takes every single day. So I just wanted to shout you all out, thank you so much. Um, and because I am in the health and wellness industry, I'll also say, please practice self-care. Go for a walk, it's getting sunny, you're out, get eight hours of sleep, that's actually incredibly impactful. Um, drink water, lots of water. And, uh, I will leave you with, I had a client this morning. And she said, I had a Rice Krispies treat yesterday at ten AM. And I said, you had a Rice Krispies treat at ten AM? She said, the heart one, but the heart ones. And so I hope you just do something really good for your heart this week, alright? And with that, ten point zero one. Um, I'm actually a really funny mom, really funny mom. Um, ten point zero one, we're headed into executive session, it is nine oh seven PM. We will return at ten thirty PM. That's all, thank you.
We are now.
Oh, seven, thank you. Okay, it is ten thirty PM, the board is still in executive session, we will be adding another thirty minutes and return at eleven PM. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. We're recording.
It is eleven PM, the board is still in executive session and we will, we're requesting twenty more minutes and we'll return at eleven twenty PM.
Okay, thank you.
It is eleven twenty-one PM and tonight's board meeting is adjourned. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too, bye.